Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. It is Thursday, February 11th, and we are the Henrico County School Board. So, thank you for all for being here. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda for today's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mrs. Atkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. And now, board members, we will hopefully get through this agenda today quickly as we know weather is coming in. So, but first, we have got to go into closed session. It's necessary for the board to have discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and release of contract for specific school board employees and the admission and discipline of specific students. Is there a motion that we move into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Consella and Ms. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session. Certified that only those items detailed in the agenda for the closed session were discussed.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Closed session is certified. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Good afternoon. For the first item, I am seeking the school board's approval of the readmission of student case number 19-20-S-4, and the name of the student is protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Is there a motion to approve the readmission of student case 19-20-S-4?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Consella. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The student is readmitted.
Thank you. For the next item, I'm recommending that the school board approve the appointment of administrative personnel.
Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for that administrative appointment?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Reverend Cooper. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The recommendation is approved. And I assume you have an announcement?
I do, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. You have just approved the appointment of John Whack as the Financial Officer in Department of Finance for Henrico County Public Schools, and we will look forward to introducing Mr. Whack at a future time to the board.
Okay. Great. And we welcome him. Okay. We are moving right along.
All right. Moving along, the next item is an opportunity for the board to review once more the fiscal year 21-22 annual financial plan that I proposed at a prior board meeting and will be subsequently in a future board meeting, seeking your approval. As I indicated during the time at which I brought that presentation forth, we, you know, the budget process is fluid, and while the budget I presented balanced our needs in relation to our target budget and certainly worked to restore a number of cuts, it did not address compensation. And I am so pleased to be able to include some information related to compensation today as we move forward. But just a quick overview of where we were with the budget. Oh, I apologize. You've already gone. I didn't want to make you.
That's all right.
Sorry. I think I got out of sync of slides here, but for those following along on the screen, you know that our budget process doesn't involve stakeholder input and so forth. And as I shared, have recommended a budget before you that I'll be seeking your approval of at a future meeting. That budget figure is reflected on the screen here and shows an increase that allowed us to restore cuts that were made to the last budget and balance with that total increase, our percent change of about 3.6%. So certainly a budget that puts us on solid footing and restores cuts and allows us to begin to get to work again in the future years to restore or get back to the business of a number of initiatives we put in place before. Since I last presented to you, I will go ahead and talk about employee compensation. Typically, much later in the budget process, we hear from our counterparts and hear from the manager related to potential employee increases. We're so pleased that we have early information, as they released it this week, related to plans for really what will be a number of pay actions that lead to increases for employee compensation. I think our county manager, John Votolka, said it well when he said, "This is a budget that is all about employee compensation and in valuing our Henrico County team and the service that they have given and continue to give." And so certainly want to thank our manager, this board, the Board of Supervisors, for the work that's been done hand in hand to ensure that our employees remain a primary focus of any budget that we put forward. So you can see that there is still information to be forthcoming, but an early look is this 2% scale adjustment and market adjustments that should take place approximately in April. We're still working on the exact date for that, along with that additional step. So that means a 4.4% increase at a minimum for all employees, and there are a number of additional pay actions that look at longevity, for example, and that's for individuals with 10 or more years. What the overall important piece to take away here is this certainly values all Henrico employees, takes a specific look at our teacher scale as well, making sure that we are leading the region at every area of our scale. So there have been some areas of the scale where we haven't quite met that mark when it comes to our higher years of service. And you can see from an example, this was shared as part of the budget presentation with the Board of Supervisors by county budget staff earlier in the week, that the result here is that Henrico County will be a region leader when it comes to teacher pay. So that's an early look there. We'll look forward to releasing how these proposed pay increases will affect individual employees in the coming days. We hope to have it set up in Oracle where employees will be able to go in and see their individual scenario and how these series of pay adjustments will positively affect them. So again, really pleased about this additional piece to share with you related to the proposed budget. So I would open it up to any questions board members may have, and again, look forward to coming back at the next board meeting with more firm information as well as to seek your approval.
Well, and before Dr. Teigen launches into her review of this, I just think I can speak for the board that we are so grateful to the county manager and the Board of Supervisors for their continued effort to support our employees of the school system, but also countywide. And it has been a stated goal for a number of years from this board that we were hoping to address salary compression and especially for our long-serving employees. And, you know, it seems to me that some people just say they want to address this and say they want to make a difference, but our county where we live, thankfully, we are able to say they're actually doing it. And we are very fortunate to live in a financially strong and well-managed county. So to our Board of Supervisors members and Mr. Votolka, we are very appreciative and hope that they know that. To me, this is a game changer. I've had, I've seen a number of things on social media where teachers have said, "Now I know I can sustain. Now I know that this is, that I feel the love," so to speak. So if any other comments on this before we move on to the next, on the rest of the budget? On this? Okay. Thank you.
I just want to, I was going to say, I was just going to say that the, but the public hearing-
Get closer to your mic, Dr. Teigen.
I'm sorry. That the public hearing that was scheduled for this evening at 5:30 due to the call for inclement weather has been postponed and will be held at 1:00 PM on the February 25th at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Great.
Well, that is all the information we have related to budget. Again, happy to take any questions that you have specific to the budget at this time.
Yes, I'd-
Board members, oh, Mrs. Consella?
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. I previously asked for or discussed legislation mandates, CARES Act funding, summer academy, and mentioned operational budgets for our three schools that were opening in the fall. But also wanted to bring forward during this time that my district is traditionally a home for a larger refugee population. And I don't know, because I didn't see it in the budget, if we've considered an influx of potential refugees into the county that we may have to budget supports for. So I just wanted to bring that forward. And of course, it ties into the software that I previously asked for, to better support and communicate with our EL families. So I just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We're well noted, and, you know, we continue to watch and make adjustments as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the budget?
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll look forward to reporting back related to our budget and ultimately seeking the board's approval at our next meeting. All right. The next item I have is related to our Health Committee update. As you know, they continue to meet regularly and examine a number of factors related to our COVID-19 response.
And Dr. Teigen, you have had a chance to change hats, so-
I have.
We'll let you get going with that.
And I have brought our favorite nurse supervisor, and she's here tonight, and she is going to kick us off. Ms. Gilbert, you want to use that mic?
Sure.
I'll drive since I've already touched.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Thank you for providing us an opportunity to update you, your families, and your staff. Monday's HCPS Health Committee meeting was focused on several items. Ensuring all preparations for reopening were being done. Reviewing the protocols and timelines associated with contact tracing and quarantining. Updating the committee members on the plan for first and second vaccines. And discussing the data or information pertinent to staff, students, and families to be shared on the Health Updates webpage. To review some of this with the board, our N95 mask fit testing continues and will continue. School Health Services has this set aside on Fridays. We have two nurses dedicated to do any of those tests that may be required on an ongoing basis. All N95 masks that have been fit tested to our staff to provide them the needed protection in our health isolation room have been received and are currently being dispensed to our schools so that that staff has those masks readily at hand when our students return. Extra personal protective equipment, including masks, gloves, hand sanitizer, wipes, are also being distributed to our schools, as well as surgical masks, as well as cloth masks. Also, we are working on bottled water for our schools. For those without a fill station, those bottles will be provided. Fill stations and classroom sinks are also being used. Staff meetings are being done at the school level to ensure that our staff education on mitigating interventions, as well as the use of personal protective equipment and that personal protective equipment availability, and our school reopening processes are ongoing. Contact tracing will continue through School Health Services. This will include following any employees or students that have positive test results, exposures, as well as those who may be symptomatic. Again, this will be for both our staff and our students. We have developed a collaborative relationship with our staff, as well as their families, and see that as an ongoing relationship as our students move back into the schools. For symptomatic students, there will be a, students or staff, there will be a 10-day period in which they will be asked to stay home and quarantine. This is in accordance with CDC. Right now, with our community transmission so high, it is a 10-day period. We are looking forward to the time when that community transmission will become lower than 50 per 100,000, and we will be able to get that quarantine period down to 24 to 72 hours. Travel, we are asking our families, as well as our staff, to follow the CDC recommendations and continue, as I have stated, with a collaborative, transparent relationship that they have with their school. And now, I will turn it over to Dr. Teigen.
This week, our nurses, I'm sorry, yeah, this week, our nurses began receiving their second dose of vaccine, and by next Friday afternoon, every nurse should be fully vaccinated. The first group of employees have received their appointment confirmations for Wednesday through Friday of next week, and 1,554 employees will report to Richmond Raceway between 2:00 and 7:00 PM on those days to receive their second dose of the vaccine. Over the following two weeks after that, the rest of our staff who received their first dose will be getting their second dose. Human Resources is maintaining a list of newly hired staff wanting to be vaccinated, and we are working to, with the Virginia Department of Health, to have them vaccinated in future events at Richmond Raceway. I know today there were about 50 between people who were unable to get their first dose for a variety of reasons or new hires that were called to the raceway. The Health Committee made several suggestions related to refreshing our Health Updates webpage as we prepare for more staff and students to return to in-person learning. Mr. Jenks and his team are working on this currently and is looking forward to unveiling at some point next week. So this is our current website. Look forward to sharing you an updated website at the next meeting. And the HCPS Health Committee continues to meet weekly. It is important to be able to have time to discuss the logistics related to having more students in our buildings, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Teigen. Ms. Atkins, we'll start on this side this time. Any questions? Reverend Cooper? Ms. Shea?
Yes, please. Two brief things. The first one is I've heard some concern from staff on the Pfizer versus the Moderna vaccine, and when they go to the raceway, how will they know which second dose they're supposed to get? So can you just explain how we're equipped to handle that?
Yes. They already have in the system which dose they received the first time, and so it's really important that staff keep the date and time they were given because of the availability of their particular vaccine that day. And so, you know, we've had some staff ask to shift their date and time. That can be problematic because if they don't have the vaccine that they received for the first dose, they will not be able to get that second dose that day. But they are monitoring and making sure that the doses match up manufacturer to manufacturer.
Perfect. Thank you. And we should also, everyone should also bring their vaccination card with them as well, which has that information, correct?
Yes. It's always good to bring that and an ID.
Ms. Shea, just to follow up on that, it will be extremely important for our employees if they do not keep this appointment scheduled as their second dose through HCPS at the raceway. They will need that vaccine card when they schedule at an outside event.
Thank you. Well, we hope that all of our staff will be able to get that second dose smoothly and appreciate the extra hiccup that it was with the scheduling and the different vaccines. The other question I have is around staffing as we enter going back into schools and just how we're doing on the classroom monitors and subs and clinic aides.
We, you know, we are continuing to seek viable candidates for those positions. We are also adding, you know, this week alone, I had a request for additional classroom monitors based on situations within schools and the fact that some of our students and their families have changed their options. And so we continue to approve additional staff and continue to seek to fill those positions.
Can you give just a brief couple sentences on what qualifications are needed to be a classroom monitor or a clinic aide for those might be listening and interested?
Absolutely. We would encourage any of our parents who would like to volunteer to consider one of these positions. The classroom monitor position has a requirement of a minimum of 60 credits, college credits. I know that we are also, though, working with schools when they have a particular candidate that might not meet those exact requirements. And I'll let you respond for the clinic assistants.
Yes, and I would welcome any nursing students in the area who are currently in school, who want to join us at Henrico to apply for the clinic aide position, because nursing students are an excellent candidate for that position. Other qualifications for folks in our community would include CPR card through the American Red Cross or American Heart Association, as well as a first aid card. And if folks need sites to get that, School Health Services is more than readily available to connect them with the location that they can get that card.
And are these full or part-time jobs?
They are temporary positions, so part-time.
So part-time jobs. So for a lot of parents who have said that they would love to volunteer at their student school, while that's not available this time, this is an option that would not be full-time hours that would help us keep our schools open. The information is on the Henrico webpage. I've told all my principals that I'm happy to fill in as classroom monitors. I don't have the clinic aide qualifications, but, you know, I just, you know, any of our parents out there or community members that really want to help us keep schools open and support our teachers to not have to fill those extra gaps, I encourage all, everyone who has the availability, part-time, to look into those positions. So thank you so much.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say the number one quality or characteristic is caring about children.
Absolutely. Thank you. Ms. Consella, did you have any questions or comment?
Yes, I did. In response to us having the timeline and reopening our in-person learning, as some in the community try to follow changing guidance and such that has evolved over time, what will we monitor going forward? And what changes did the Health Committee ask be made to the website to better communicate this information with our families?
A lot of the information requested this time was really in preparation for return and reminders about things such as how to properly wear a mask, you know, what it might look like, the expectations in the morning for doing that self-health check, you know, what it might look like getting on a bus that you're, you know, a child is wearing their mask, where they're, you know, how they're seated on the bus, things like that, how it might look, you know, with the dots on the floors to walk through the hallways. So a lot of like little tiny videos that would kind of give a glimpse of what that looks like. And then on the actual data, there was discussion about some of the numbers just being more, you know, about what that does to people. And we talked about, a little bit about, how do you really put things up there that are relevant, like outbreaks from a student to a teacher or other adult, or an adult to a student? And so those are things that when we meet this Monday, I'm hoping we can iron out what some of those metrics might look like, because I know that staff feels like that's important to keep those numbers out there in a way that is easy for the public and our families to see. Where, you know, we're listing everything still there. We'll continue. That'll be archived, but really starting on what does it look like once we have more students in person?
I appreciate that. I've received numerous questions about what metrics would we be using going forward. And in follow-up to that, I know you just mentioned the 10-day quarantine when the community transmission numbers are highest level versus the 24 to 72-hour quarantine when transmission levels decrease. I would imagine as our numbers decrease, that information as well would be posted out on this revised webpage refresh-
We can certainly post-
Right? To say where we are, 10-day quarantine, and then when it shifts to 24 to 72 hours quarantine. We'll highlight that as well.
We can certainly look at how we could communicate that through the website.
And Ms. Consella, for any student who goes home from the clinic, a letter is being sent from School Health Services with that nurse's information, so specifics to that child-
Okay.
-letting the parent know whether it's 10 days, 24, 72. And we set that we look at the data each week so that we know for that week what our timeframe is going to be, and we're consistent throughout that week, so it doesn't change day to day. So at the beginning of the week, if it's 10 days, it'll be 10 days for that week. And again, if the child leaves from the clinic, that information goes directly to the parent at that time.
Thank you. Any way we can provide consistency, I'm going forward. I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. That concludes our Health Committee update. The next item I have for the board's information is related to the Standards of Learning Tests. I know that this is information our board has requested and is certainly top of mind to our families and our community related to how we are approaching Standards of Learning Testing, given pandemic conditions. And while we've seen the VDOE issue a state-level waiver allowing some flexibility for local assessments in lieu of certain SOL tests, the federal component, which is mandated, is going to require us to continue to use SOL tests for students to earn verified credits. And so with more information, I'm going to turn it over to our Department of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation staff to provide an overview for the board. And of course, we'll be happy to take questions that you have as well. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, I am joined by Ms. Kathy Durbin, our Educational Specialist of Assessment, to provide a brief update on SOL testing this school year. Information shared in this slide is directly from the Virginia Department of Education School Reopening FAQ document. To reduce testing requirements for students in light of COVID-19, a state-level waiver has been approved to allow school divisions the flexibility to choose to administer local alternative assessments in place of specific SOL tests during the 2020-21 school year. However, at this time, the remainder of the SOL tests that are not covered under this waiver, which are all federally mandated or used by students to earn verified credit, will be administered as scheduled. Additionally, state accreditation has been waived again for the 2021-22 school year based on data from 2020-21. With the announcement of the waiver for Virginia Studies, Civics, and Economics, and Grade 8 Writing, we are excited to utilize this flexibility to further our efforts towards implementing a balanced assessment program reflective of our Henrico learner profile. Performance assessments had already been embedded into the curriculum for most of these courses and only needed to be refined or expanded to meet VDOE's requirements. Performance assessments allow for students to apply, synthesize, and evaluate the content in meaningful ways through relevant tasks, which cannot typically be achieved through a traditional multiple-choice test. Our content specialists work closely with teachers to ensure that assessments covered the full content and skills of the Standards of Learning. The assessments were designed to be administered both virtually and in person as needed, and teachers have received training on administering and scoring the performance assessments to provide meaningful feedback to the students on their work. To further reduce the testing burden for students and staff for 2020-21, we have also made modifications to the end-of-course SOL writing testing. Typically, this test is administered to students in Grade 10 English. However, school divisions have the flexibility to administer the end-of-course writing test through Grade 11. For this year's Grade 10 English students, we have decided to defer testing until fall of 2021. Additionally, for next year only, we will be utilizing CARES funding to administer the alternate test, Work Keys Writing, in place of the SOL to all students in this cohort during the fall of English 11. The Work Keys Writing Test is an approved substitute test, which requires significantly less instructional time to administer, and students tend to be more successful on the first attempt of this test than the end-of-course SOL writing test. To ensure students are prepared, the first month of instruction in English 11 will be used to review key writing concepts and skills. And at this time, Ms. Durbin will share more about our SOL testing activities this school year.
We have continued to test our high schools in order to allow students needing end-of-course verified credits to meet graduation requirements. As you can see, our high schools have been busy helping our students, especially our seniors, have the opportunities to earn their verified credits. With the recent updates to the emergency guideline- With the recent updates to the emergency guidelines, our cars have been working with school counseling to allow eligible students the opportunity to earn a locally awarded verified credit for past SOL tests that met the participation and score requirements. Seniors will be given an option to participate in testing or to earn the maximum LAVC, locally awarded verified credits, allowed under the most recent guidelines. In spring 2021, we will provide SOL testing in reading, math, science, and end-of-course history for all grades three through high school. These tests must be taken in person, so we will utilize Wednesdays for our virtual learners to come in and test. Our in-person learners will complete the tests on in-person days per the school's schedule, which can begin as early as May 3rd. We will follow the accommodation requirements as well as COVID-19 safety protocols to ensure, excuse me, to ensure secure and safe testing for all of our students. Our next steps will be communicating with families to survey their SOL testing plans for their children. Parents or guardians have the right to refuse participation in any and all of the required SOL tests on principle or as related to the COVID-19 pandemic. In most cases, these refusals will not negatively impact a student. However, schools are expected to meet SOL participation requirements and may have federal or state-imposed required actions should they not meet their targets. If SOL tests are needed for students to earn verified credits to meet graduation requirements, and a parent or student refuses to participate in SOL tests, a student's ability to graduate may be affected. Students intending to graduate in June 2021 must complete the required testing to meet these requirements before the end of the school year, if they have not already earned the required verified credits from the past. If students intend to graduate after June 2021, they may choose to be tested during the next school year 21-22. To collect participation information, a form will be available through RICOR for families to complete. The forms will be available online in English and Spanish, and paper copies will also be available in English, Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, Dari, and Vietnamese. Parents may also choose to submit a signed letter to their child's school with their participation choices. Parents who do not respond will be contacted by school staff to gather their intent. At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Board members, we'll start at this end this time. Ms. Cancela?
Yes, thank you. Will our teachers and staff be able to cover the content necessary before the SOLs, given our timeline, our in-person amount of learning and our virtual amount of learning that we've had this year?
The SOL content should be part of their curriculum, so they should be covering it right now.
Right. But will they be able to complete it before the SOLs?
Might I add, and I see Mr. DeSault coming forward, and I'll add a few comments while he's on his way. The way our instructional day, both in the virtual and in-person learning environment, are laid out now, the intent is to meet the required instructional minutes and the required SOL. We understand, of course, that in any given year, there may be a number of reasons that's a challenge for teachers to meet with students, not only the rate at which students learn the material, but any number of factors. So, that's something we continue to strive towards. But certainly, the day, both in the virtual environment and the in-person environment, are designed to help us meet those goals. Mr. DeSault, have I covered that, or you want to add anything there related to our program of study?
Good afternoon. The only other thing I would add, again, at the elementary level, and I'll let Mrs. Seeley, my colleague, address anything at the secondary level, is that the 4.5 benchmarks and nine-week benchmarks are a great formative tool for our teachers to see where the gaps are, and then, of course, address those as they move along. So, our pacing has been pretty steady, and then any gaps that we are seeing, the ability to have those shine through the test and then remediate the students is kind of what we're working on to make sure that we stay on pace.
At the secondary level, our specialists are consistently monitoring the four-and-a-half-week and nine-week assessments, and they are working closely and personally with teachers to adjust pacing, to make sure that they are covering the essentials that will be tested by the Standards of Learning. They are consistently updating teachers as they look at that data and share that data with the secondary-level directors, as well as with the principals. So, they are aware of where they're going with the curriculum, how fast they're getting there, and the opportunities that they have to remediate as we get closer to the tests.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. We've received quite a bit of correspondence, as you can imagine, in terms of, in response to our timeline and instructional time and wellness time. So, I appreciate you letting me know that we will still be able to cover content. And then, do we anticipate any, prior to the May 3rd date for SOLs, do we anticipate keeping the structure of our day intact in terms of our extended services in the afternoon and the Wellness Wednesday that we had originally put forward? Because I'd just like to highlight that physical and mental health for our students and families, our guardians, our teachers, our staff, administrators, and Henrico community are critical to ensuring the student growth and overall well-being as we move forward. So, I just, in response to some of the inbox messages we've received and phone calls about Wellness Wednesday, if anyone could speak to that.
I see several staff jumping up to take that question, and so, that's good. We're all equally vested in the topic and are happy to cover that. And so, Mr. DeSault is here, and also, I noticed that Dr. Champ is here, and Dr. Grant's absence this evening, and so, school leadership and our Teaching, Learning, and Innovation team will be happy to tackle both schedule questions and Wellness Wednesday. Go ahead.
So, as far as the schedule goes, Wellness Wednesday, of course, gives us the opportunity to keep that close check on our students for the wellness piece, the social-emotional. The block of time that we have designated after 10 o'clock, of course, is going to be key to a number of our students for some additional remediation, whether it be one-on-one, small group. And it also allows for some extension time to keep that, you know, continued joy of instruction going, especially with the connection to our library, art, music, and PE programs. In terms of the schedule, we plan on keeping the Wellness Wednesdays as we move through the third quarter. Of course, we're always open to feedback, and as we move through that period, we are very confident that this dedicated time will be an asset to not only our students, but also our teachers, as they unpack the various diagnostic, formative, and summative tools that we now have at our disposal this year through the support of the CARES Act funding that will also help identify where some of the gaps are with our students. So, it's a valuable time, and it will not impact the instruction only but to advance it.
You may as well stay, because you know it's, there are more questions coming.
I think Dr. Champ was coming forward to talk about the extended services block, I think specifically, and how that will work at secondary.
Good afternoon, everyone. In addition to what Mr. DeSault said, at the secondary level, we will continue to have, can you all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We will continue to have our advisory period, like we do every day for our middle-school students, in which they are, they will do their second-step lesson, which is a social-emotional learning lesson, as well as they will complete any work that was assigned on the Day One and Day Two. So, they will complete any previously-assigned homework or asynchronous work on that Monday and Tuesday. Many kids may get that done on Monday afternoon and Tuesday afternoon, so they can focus on makeup work, recovery work, assessments, and so forth, or projects on Wednesday.
And if I may ask a follow-up question? For those students who may not have any makeup work or not need remediation, are there enrichment opportunities?
Absolutely. Teachers will be able to gauge what's happening in their classrooms and where students are academically. I know many students at the high school level, as well as middle-school level, have projects and research that they can work on during that time, so they will have the opportunity to do enrichment as well.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shea?
Yes, thank you. With regards to the SOLs, do we see this as a, so the state has waived our requirement, but the reason we have to, we need to, the reason we need to administer is federal requirements, correct? And graduation requirements. Do we foresee the federal requirement being waived, possibly? Or is it?
We're not predicting a change at this time. And yes, so, I mean, while we've seen flexibility at the state level with some of the tests, that means we can use a local alternative assessment, so it isn't that we aren't assessing altogether. The expectation is that we still assess the standards that were expected to be taught, the Virginia Standards of Learning, but can do so in an alternative way. So, that's what the state waiver really talks about. And then, the pieces where those particular SOL tests are used as part of the federal accountability system, we don't have any information that leads us to believe anything different is going to occur, so we're making plans accordingly to meet that federal requirement.
This is obviously a decision that's much above us when it comes to SOLs this year, but I'll just go on the record.
You can repeat that a couple of times.
Yeah. This is a decision that goes far above where we are on the need to administer SOLs, but I think when all of us look at this year, we can so clearly see how precious face-to-face instructional time is. And I, you know, frankly, I wish it didn't have to be used for standardized tests this year, but again, this is a decision that is far above us. I would like to shift a little bit when talking about assessments from SOLs to talk about the MAPS test a little bit. I've gotten quite a few questions and correspondence about this from my constituents. So, when we look at the NWEA or the MAPS tests, will they be administered this year?
They have not been administered this year.
And can you share a little bit on why that is, and if that's for this year, or if that's going forth?
Sure. And I'm going to call on my colleagues in a minute as well, but one of the reasons is that, you know, going into this school year, we knew it was going to look very different than in years past, and we wanted to have multiple measures of student progress, not just rely on one. So, I'm going to allow my colleagues to share a little bit about some of those other assessments we're using.
So, again, I'll speak to the elementary level. We really saw this year with the removal of the NWA exam as an opportunity and exploration. We know that we want to have multiple measures of assessment for students, and we understand that parents absolutely want to have that standardized snapshot in time. We acknowledge that. It's going to be our job to fill in the gaps with not only our teachers, but our parents as well, that formative tools and summative tools that we currently have at our disposal will tell the story as well, and that's an opportunity for growth for us right now. And we're working very diligently to work with our administrators and our teachers so that they can unpack that for a parent, because as a parent, you want to know how your child's doing. You want to know where their areas for growth are. And right now, in the previous years, that NWA test really was that snapshot for a number of parents to where they would be stacking up. What we really wanted to do this year, especially at that elementary level, is focus on where are those gaps. We know all of our kids are going to have areas of growth. So, the various tools that we have at our disposal have really been able to tell teachers not only where the gaps are, but what they need to do to close those gaps. And that's the part that we continue to push for, and we need to have additional support in terms of helping our parents understand that, so that they can get the clear picture of where their child is and where they need to go.
I'll piggyback on that on a little bit. I think you're right. I think it's so important to have feedback about where our students are, both as educators and as parents. And I, as we look forward and negotiating contracts as we go forth with some of these adaptive softwares where we are getting these continuous, I encourage us to, if possible, advocate that parents would have access to a dashboard where they can readily pull up where their students are. I know as a parent, I have access to that on DreamBox, which is the math adaptive software, and that's really helpful for me. I don't have the access for the literacy pieces. The teachers will sometimes print it out and send it, but that's kind of one extra thing on them. But I've been able to see on an educator, kind of the backside of the dashboard on some of our schools that are making literacy progress and how detailed that is. And I mean, it's amazing. It truly informs instruction on how to move students and classes forward. But as a parent, I don't have access to that, and I don't get to see that, and I think that's one of the benefits that MAPS did while it was just a single snapshot, that the parent got the report out of that. And so, as we look at these alternative ways that we are assessing growth and assessing where students are, I think it's important that the parents be able to have access to that as well, to know where their students are, but to also know where their students' gaps are. So, I know particularly in math, that's been a concern for some of my constituents. And with the MAPS test, when they get their report out, they can take the report out and the code and put it in Khan Academy and some other free resources, and it will kind of build a specialized program for their student that they often use during the summer or another, you know, kind of gap time to fill those gaps, so that they're more prepared for another year. So, how can parents best access things like that for their student now that we don't have MAPS? Is there any way that they can access resources like that tailored to their student?
Yeah, and that's a great perspective, and I appreciate that, and we'll take that in consideration. Right now, the main way that we're doing that is kind of a top-down approach. We're letting our administrators know what are the most key metrics that they would want to be looking for when they go into planning meetings and working with teachers, and so that teachers can turnkey that to the parents. Again, we had a small pot of resources to begin the year, and, before this year, and then as this year began, we had a large number of resources. And trying to do that in a logical, systematic way took a couple weeks or so to really get going. And now that we're getting into that second half of the year, and we've got kids understanding the products, and we finally have teachers understanding that not only are we looking at just the assessments and formative things we're doing in the classroom, but we're looking at these digital resources as well to, as you said, inform the instruction. I think the more time that we have with the product and highlighting the specific reports, because you can get overwhelmed when you look at these. Some of these dashboards are gigantic. And for us, even as specialists, we are trying to identify right now in immediacy which are the key reports that we would share with parents, and we're continually making progress with that. We have a lot of room to grow, but I think we're going to get there.
So, could we expect maybe by the end of the year for parents going into the summer to have some sort of report out at the beginning of the summer where their students are and what some of the, you know, subsets to, you know, for students, for parents who want to work with their students during the summer, some of the subsets to work on?
Yeah, and what I think that continues to do, it continues to build that portfolio, the whole picture of the child. It's not just, as you said, we got the MAPS report, and I could see exactly where they were. The more pieces of data that we can put in front of our parents, the better the picture that we have. And again, not to get too far down the road, but if we're looking at things like IB, gifted specialty centers, this is the direction we want to go. We want to make it as inclusive as possible and truly show the whole picture of the child.
Thank you. Do we have similar kinds of programs at the secondary for, because I think MAPS went six through eight, is that correct? So, for, or sorry, three through eight, and so for that six through eight, do we also have similar type of assessments?
We do. We implemented across all schools this year Imagine Math. We had been using No Red Ink, which is a writing program, and then Newzella. So, those are the three digital resources across all of our secondary schools that are available to all students. Imagine Math does only go up through geometry, but it's sixth grade through geometry. And then, all of our courses where there would be an SOL test are giving those checkpoints that we referenced before, the four-and-a-half-week and the nine-week checkpoints. And it just depends from course to course what that checkpoint looks like. In some cases, it is a multiple-choice assessment, but in cases like with ELA, those assessments are mirroring the performance tasks that our students are getting ready to take as part of the writing, the eighth-grade substitute writing SOL test, and then eventually, as they get into high school, that will become the EOC writing assessment. It will be a performance task. So, it just varies from content to content what kind of assessments are being used. We are working with Newzella to get a better dashboard from them. They had a nice dashboard when we started, they took it down, and then at our pushing and prodding, they have put a dashboard back up for us, and we are continually meeting with them to expand that dashboard so that we see more than just usage, so that we can see growth, because Newzella is the program where we would be would be looking for reading growth in secondary.
Thank you. And then, one last question on this matter. So, I know our MAPS and NWEA, those are nationally-normed tests. How is the information, the data coming out of these other assessment tools that are kind of embedded in our curriculum? How is that in terms of being normed? Do we have... Does it give us a true understanding of that nationally-normed reference?
So, I think it really depends on the digital resource. So, I'll give you one, for example, Lexia Core that we use at the elementary level. It works with Metometrics. So, it basically pulls in a variety of science of reading, so to speak, and then we'll get a Lexile score out of that, so we know exactly where the appropriate reading level would be for students. So, a variety of our tools have those embedded in it. And again, that kind of goes back to telling the story to our parents. If we're using this digital resource, where does your child really fall?
Thank you so much. And I'll just end with giving a little bit of an anecdote from a parent-teacher conference that I was on the parent's side of. And the teacher shared that these everyday assessments that are kind of built into this adaptive technology that we're doing, she said that it has been a total game changer, and it is the best thing that has happened with this virtual learning, and that it has really transformed her way of meeting the needs of every student and not having to pull out extra time for assessment and data entry, but just to have it be organically part of their learning experience. So, I want to thank Dr. Cashwell and your team for making that investment on these softwares. They are not inexpensive, but I have heard, well, seen it just as a parent with my kids working, but also heard from our educators that, you know, in the elementary school world, Lexia and DreamBox and Achieve 3000 particularly have been really good investments for them. So, thank you. And that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question. So, since parents have to sign intent letters, what information is going to be provided to them to help educate them on the impact of the decision?
So, much of the information that we shared with you all today in terms of, you know, if a student doesn't need this for a verified credit, so really our grades three through eight, depending on if they're taking those high school courses, there is no negative impact for the student. But SOL data is just like any other data point for our staff. So, it is another measure for our schools to determine what supports are necessary for students. And our families who need this SOL testing for the verified credit, we are sharing that information with them specifically. You know, different students need different tests, so the schools are working on developing those lists and will communicate with those families directly.
Thank you. And I'm glad you kind of mentioned the word "supports," because I guess my question would be, you know, what supports are we going to be providing to students who have traditionally struggled with the standardized testing and will be continuing with virtual learning?
So, those students, if they choose to participate in testing, they will be able to come in on Wednesdays, you know, kind of honoring the fact that they chose virtual learning for a reason, and we want to provide them with a safe environment to participate in testing. We are going to also offer transportation to those families to come into school on those days, as well as meals.
Thank you so much. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Ms. Atkins?
Thank you so much for sharing the information that you shared today. Do we have a timeline for communication on this?
Our plan is to get communication out as soon as possible, hopefully by next week. We would like to go ahead and start communicating with our families, because just like our return-to-school planning, this data is going to drive individual school plans and schedules.
One of the things I'd like for us to consider, because a lot will be happening over the next four weeks regarding communication, and sometimes things can get lost in the shuffle. And so, I'd like for us to be really innovative in how we communicate this to family, particularly around the supports that will be available for those that do choose it. So, I think we have an opportunity to be innovative into the "why." So, the decision-making here is a big one for families. And so, in our communications, let's make sure we answer that question of why it's important and how much weight this decision have, specifically juniors and seniors. The other question that I have is around success, and please keep me honest. I believe I heard you say that the Work Keys test is, appears to be the most successful. Is that accurate?
So, traditionally, in a normal school year, we give students the SOL tests. And if they are not able to pass that test, then we give them the Work Keys as a substitute test. And many of our students who struggle with completing the SOL writing test can pass that test very successfully.
And so, thank you for sharing that, because I'm aware of that. I'd like to better understand why. Why are the students more successful with that particular test? I think there's some telling stories and information that we can learn as to why students are more successful. Not in this setting, but I would like to have a conversation or see a report with the why particular students are able to be so much more successful with the Work Keys writing test than the SOL test. So, at some future date, not right now, but I think that would be a healthy conversation and a very telling one for those that struggle with the SOL. So, thank you very much. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yeah, just, I'll be quick, but I think what we're hearing is a lot from our constituents is our parents are in a different place this year than a lot of other years, obviously. And so many of them are so much more involved with their students' learning. They're up to date on a daily basis, and they're concerned, you know. There are, not everybody, of course, there's no everybody in this situation, but there are some parents who are concerned. They hear things, you know. They worry that with SOLs or any kind of testing, that teachers will stop introducing new material, review what has been done to solidify learning before testing. They worry about that. Did those teachers, that's why I was so glad it was asked, you know, are we on pace for the school year? Because a lot of parents are worried about that. They're worried about learning loss. They're worried about, will the teachers basically have to start rushing to get it all in? Will retention happen, that kind of thing? And we have a lot of invested parents right now, and they are, they're just concerned about all of that, but also the added stress that testing and this schedule brings. So, I just, we, you know, I think one of our jobs is to funnel information, what we're hearing that maybe doesn't, you know, come to in an email to you. But just to bring those things to the forefront, I mean, obviously, I will repeat it, it is not a decision we make, and because we're getting that question already, you know, when, are you going to make us do this? Are you going to have us? Obviously, this, we're coming up with a way forward, but I just think we need to be really tuned in to the feedback from parents and students about this and their concerns for success. Are they on pace? Are they ready for these assessments? I know we're going to have parents, is May 3rd, you know, since that's the first day that's available, are they going to be ready on May 3rd to take a test like this? So, I just think we need to be listening to parents ever more than we ever have to be sure that we do this the right way. And I think Ms. Atkins' point of communication, I like your idea. We've got to be very creative, making sure that parents understand this, but, you know, maybe there's one communication about how all of this information in one place, delivered multiple times to get it out there. But, you know, I think dribs and drabs would be hard. So, it just, at one time, some people have it, but anyway.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. That's mushy.
I believe they will find what they need on that RICOR form. I think a lot of information, it might be a little overwhelming, on that RICOR form, and the opportunity to opt out is there.
Right.
And they don't have to write a letter. That will suffice this school year for them to opt out. And in the past, they've had to write a letter.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you. Anything else, board members?
Thank you to all of our presenters. I want to just echo some thanks across the board for our multiple departments. I know our presentation was led by our folks in research, planning, and accountability, but we got to hear from school leadership, teaching, and learning, and innovation. You can see the partnership that is around making sure we are supporting our schools and our students through our program of learning and also assessment. So, feedback well taken from the board, and we'll continue to work to provide as much flexibility where we're able to provide that flexibility for our students this year. All right. Next, I am seeking the board's approval, actually, on four policies you've seen before, and these are minor revisions to bring them into line with current practice. And again, you've had an opportunity to review these. Seeking the board's approval first of proposed revisions to policy P6-02-007 Early Dismissal.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of policy P6-02-007?
So moved.
Moved by Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, members of the board. Next, seeking your approval for proposed revisions to policy P6-09-018 Protection From Sex Offenders.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of policy P6-09-018?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Consela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy update is approved.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of proposed revisions to policy P6-12-009 Performance and Community Activities.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of policy P6-012-009?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval of the proposed revisions to policy P11-08-001 School Visitors.
Is there a motion to approve the revision of policy P11-08-001? So moved. Thank you, Ms. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Consela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy is approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Next, providing an opportunity for a first look at a proposed change, then I'll subsequently at another meeting be seeking your approval. But this is a proposed revision to policy P7-09-006 Class Ranking, and this is to bring our policy and practice into alignment with Virginia Code, as well as our strategic plan Destination 2025, the plan for Henrico County Public Schools. Any questions at this time?
Dr. Cashwell, I know there are going to be some, so...
Sure.
Yes. Mrs. Shea, you want to go first? You might...
Thank you. So, a little bit of clarity for our constituents, because I didn't know this until I was on the board, but the school board works with passing the policies, and then the regulations that go along with them, which are kind of the nuts and bolts of how the policies go into place or develop by our staff. So, this is looking specifically at the policy, but I do have a question about the regulation that goes along with it. So, the regulation has a great bit of detail on how we calculate GPAs and class ranks. Has there been any recent discussion or consideration into how specialty center class rank is calculated in comparison to the rest of the student body?
I would just add that that's not accounted for in this particular revision that we've brought forth. That is a discussion we've heard from our constituents. Certainly, it's something I heard coming into the county as part of my listening sessions and through the Amy's Passport work. It's something our school leadership team continues to address with our secondary principals specifically, as they're looking at how we might approach that differently. So, we don't have any recommendations to the board at this point related to any changes there, but would welcome the board's feedback as we consider any potential changes in the future.
Wonderful. Well, I would just like to give the feedback that I would like us to look into it at some point, maybe when we have a little more breathing room, you know, when we've gotten some of our COVID-related pieces off our plate. But this is a topic that came up quite frequently at the lay advisory council that Ms. Consela and I were a part of before we were on the board, particularly about the, with the two high schools that I represent, Freeman and Godwin. Those parents shared a lot of concern on, should specialty center class rank be included in that of the rest of the student body and vice versa? So, you know, as you look into that, also maybe perhaps consider looking into a Latin honor system that some other counties have moved to, and, you know, really discussion of how does that positively or negatively impact college applications and that sort of thing? So, I know this is just about the policy, but I thought it was a great opportunity to bring that forth, as that's something that I've heard quite a bit of feedback on. Thank you. That's all.
Yeah, your interest in that topic is noted, and that's something we'll continue to seek the input of the full board on as we consider any potential changes there.
And I just wanted to, have we informed parents and how we're getting this word out that this is up for discussion and that this is a change?
The change we're proposing now does not affect class rank, specialty centers, or anything in that nature. What this has to do with is the ability to include middle school credit going forward after a certain point. So, this doesn't impact students who may have currently accumulated that. It will go into effect at a certain date going forward, should the board approve this policy at a future date. And so, again, this does bring us in alignment to code that currently exists. So, this is a case where, in reviewing a number of our policies, there may be some areas where we haven't been consistent.
Well, and I just had a couple of parents actually contact me and say, you know, does every, it was kind of like, does everybody know about this?
And this is a conversation that is, you know, occurring between counselors and students and counselors and parents as they're working on scheduling for next year, so...
So, it's done in that matter. So, counselors are getting the word out there.
And certainly, until the policy were approved, we wouldn't have anything to communicate there. But, you know, this is something that actually, similar to what Mrs. Shea was bringing up, and you all as a board have heard concerns about class rank, specifically this idea about middle school credits is something that's come to our counselors quite a bit, and it's been a hot topic, and certainly something that we've sought to address here moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this? It will be up for vote next time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Seeing no questions about that. The next item I have is related to a recommendation to accept a $500 grant award to Tucker High School from the Computer Science Teachers Association. Is there a motion to accept the grant that benefits Tucker High School? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'm recommending the school board accept approximately $51,200 in funding from the Maymont Foundation via the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, Be Wet Grant.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the grant as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, seeking your approval, or your acceptance, rather, of the School Security Equipment Grant Award of $118,153 from the Virginia Department of Education.
Is there a motion to accept the grant, and this benefits Davis Elementary and Moody Middle School? So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Any sec, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Consela. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, seeking your acceptance of grant funding from Share Our Strength and the Virginia No Kid Hungry Campaign in the amount of $5,000.
Is there a motion to accept the grant? This is going to be utilized by our school nutrition services.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, seeking your acceptance of the Virginia Alcoholic and Beverage Control Authority or the ABC Youth Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Project, a 2020 grant award of $250 that'll go to Henrico High School.
Is there a motion to accept the grant?
So moved.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The grant is accepted.
Thank you. Next, recommending the school board accept $16,551 in year-two funding from the Virginia Commonwealth University via the Institute of Educational Sciences Grant Award.
Is there a motion to accept the grant as recommended? So moved. Move by Mrs. Shea, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Consella, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Also, seeking your acceptance of the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support VTSS Grant Award from the Virginia Department of Education in the amount of $26,500.
Is there a motion to accept the Virginia Department of Graduate Education Grant?
So moved.
Move by Mrs. Consella, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cooper, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Also recommending that the school board accept the Henrico Education Foundation Grant Award totaling $57,000. This is for Cycle One of the 2020-2021 school year.
Sure. Madam Chair.
Uh, Mrs. Consella.
Yes, I, I received feedback actually in response to this being on our agenda today, and I have some educators from around Henrico County Public Schools who want me to publicly thank Hef on their behalf for partially funding their national board's certification endeavors as that funding that's norm, we normally provide was cut in this year's budget. So, thank you so much to the Henrico Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Consella. And I'll add to that, it's the board's rep to Hef, I mean, that's an amazing group of people. They, they are selfless, they are dedicated, they just get it done, and they allow us to do, and our teachers to do so much that they wouldn't be otherwise able to do. So, on behalf of all of us, we thank Hef, that's an amazing group of people, truly is.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mrs. Consella. Absolutely could not do what we do for our staff and our students without the support of the Henrico Education Foundation. They continue to come through in so many creative ways to assist our endeavors, so.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the Cycle One Grants from Hef?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Consella, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, excuse me, grant is accepted.
All right. For the final item I'm bringing forth, I'm really excited to have Dr. Manns come forward to share an overview of efforts that have been underway in the Office of Equity Diversity and Opportunity for this school year. And there is, we would need about three days or maybe more than that to cover every effort that has been spearheaded by Dr. Manns through her department as it touches every aspect of, of our operations. But, she has highlighted a few of those efforts to share with the board today, and so we look forward to highlighting the work and taking any questions you may have. Dr. Manns?
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, I'm here to update you on the Office of Equity Diversity and Opportunity. You are going to hear about how our office is supporting the equity and diversity inclusivity efforts in Henrico County Public Schools. I also plan to highlight some of the people in our district who are facilitating and championing this work. Before I would begin, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge preemptively that our Equity Diversity Advisory Committee EDAC update is not a part of this presentation. EDAC members have historically been the strongest supporters of our work, but we have not been able to meet due to members' concerns for COVID. My hope is that this will be remedied and we can begin to meet in the summer with the appropriate restrictions. Their input and past efforts have been invaluable, and I look forward to having back some of our past members and identifying new members for the advisory. The Department of Equity Diversity and Opportunity centers our work around these four areas. Provide equity consultation and support, coordinate diversity inclusivity professional learning, cultivate culturally responsive education practice, empower student voice. We plan to update our website this spring to emulate these areas of focus. I hope that the update will make our programming more transparent, and we plan to include a significant amount of resources for staff, parents, and students. Please be on the lookout for our website update. Our offer, our office offers consultation and support to other offices, departments, and schools across the division on best practices for addressing barriers towards equity, inclusivity, and other issues within our purview. We also provide broader programming with the overarching goal of growing our internal capacity for addressing inequities and the promotion of belonging within our school culture. Our office oversees elementary coalition programming in partnership with Brooke Thompson, a specialist from the Department of Professional Learning. This coalition is a cohort of educators from each elementary school that participates in professional learning opportunities focused on equity and culturally responsive education in the classroom using the CREAM model framework and social-emotional learning as a countermeasure for bullying and harassment. Topics covered this year in the coalition meetings include guest presenters from Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities to deepen the understanding at the center of the CREAM model, which is self-reflection and culture of belonging. Daring dialogue, PSC facilitators speaking on their experiences with fourth grade teachers division-wide on how to engage in daring conversations that are occurring around, regarding Virginia studies, which is, which is part of our knowledge construction component of the CREAM model. Coalition participants are provided a deliverable for each meeting to share with the staff at their schools so that all elementary educators have the opportunity to grow in their understanding of equity and culturally responsive education practices. Our office, our office also provides coaching and collaboration with equity teams located in every middle and high school. These teams are designated to be the driving force towards inclusion and equity for all students at the school level. Over the last several years, we have worked in coordination with the Henrico Education Equity Initiative Grant through the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities to train and establish school-based teams that are versed in the intersection of race, class, and public education, and are able to engage in meaningful dialogue and problem solving. The teams work to identify opportunity gaps and develop action plans to address these gaps, thereby fostering a sense of belonging for students, increasing family engaging, engagement, and improving academic and behavioral outcomes for all students. Each team is charged with developing at least one school-based equity goal that aligns to school improvement measures within their VSEP. Notable work being done by some of our equity team includes addressing belonging achievement gaps for our English language learning students, increasing the number of underrepresented students in AB coursework, collecting qualitative and quantitative data about the student's sense of belonging to determine areas of focus, being intentional in increasing the sense of belonging and engagement for families within their community. Many of our secondary schools, due to all that has transpired this year, are continuing to work this, to work to shape their team to operate as effectively as possible in this virtual world. The summer is the slated time to bring equity teams together for resetting, training, and goal setting. Moving forward, an equity, an equity report will be provided to the DLT and school board at the end of every school term, outlining the current, their current efforts of our equity teams. The Office of Equity and Diversity and Opportunity was approached about safety concerns within the schools from students, staff, and school resource officers. In response, EDO was asked to outline a response that would support school stakeholders' emotional and physical safety. We work with stakeholder work groups to design a school safety paradigm around the idea that every stakeholder is a, is a school community guardian. The stakeholder groups included students, parents, staff, school leadership, teachers, school resource officers, school security officers, school-based mental health. Participants provided input on expectations for stakeholders related to a culture of care and safety, professional development, and accountability measures. We are calling the school safety paradigm CARES, Collaborative Action Results in Environmental Safety. More information will be forthcoming in a future presentation. In response to the needs of students in our immigrant and refugee communities, our office has collaborated with Sarah Modrack, the E, the L Specialist, and Rihanna Van, Henrico Community, County Community Engagement Coordinator, to engage over 25 nonprofits, local churches, mosques, and individual people who all have the common goal of serving our immigrant and refugee population. At the height of COVID, we were meeting weekly to discuss the various support being provided and brainstorm ways that we could collaboratively work to support each other's efforts. We now meet monthly, and we are excited to having, to now include principals and directors to attend our meetings to help them understand about the needs of the community as well as learn what services are available to students and family. During the 2019-2020 school year, the, our office developed a culturally responsive educator model framework, which was designed as a lens for the Henrico learner profile. The CREAM model is designed like a wheel, in the middle representing culturally responsive and belonging, and five spokes sections representing multicultural education practices. Embedding students' cultural knowledge in their lessons, which is content knowledge, allowing opportunities for students to study their affective domain and reflect on others, which is knowledge construction, identifying the most effective learning styles for collective groups of students, which is equity pedagogy, embedding opportunities to engage in socially oriented instruction, which is prejudice reduction, and ensuring communication engagement policy and procedures are responsive to all students and families is school empowerment. The CREAM model is the foundational framework of our multi-year EDO professional development plan. The Equity Diversity Professional Learning Specialist, Carigene O'Neill, has been tasked with supporting the facilitation of professional learning for work being done in the office of equity, in our office. Much of our efforts are focused on supporting staff with the paradigm shifting that occurs in the center of the wheel. That includes self-reflection, culture of belonging, and restorative language. We realize that the paradigm shifting must occur if we are to authentically work to ensure that every student has a sense of belonging in our schools. Ms. O'Neill is a product of Henrico County Public Schools, graduating from Godwin High School. She earned a BA from Randolph-Macon and later her edulacation specialist, specialist degree in school psychology from William &amp; Mary. In addition, she has earned her administration supervision certificate from VCU, and we are proud to have her on our team. As part of our multi-year professional development, we are working to develop a four-part, 40-hour training series that promotes awareness, belonging, and outlines the spokes implementation into our instructional delivery. We collaborated with the Metropolitan Education Research Consortium, Merck, and they provided research, and the EDO team used this information and more to complete CREAMS Part One and CREAM Part Two. The CREAM Part One and CREAM Part Two are available along with a book study on Culture Responsive in the Brain, a foundational text of which we built this framework. The book is available on the Gale eBook library for free. The remaining sections will be completed by the end of the school term. The CREAM training series and the book study will be mandatory to earn the Culture Responsive Education, Educator's Certification and that, that we hope to be part of our future career ladder. Merck is also collaborating with our office on a national grant focused on developing the culturally responsive instructional capacity of teachers. We have a total of 14 teachers participating in this study. The Ensuring Equity Series is an, is offering, is an online offering designed in alignment with our CREAM model. It is centered around cultural sensitivity, belonging, poverty, culturally responsive principles, and dignity. This summer, over 1,000 educators, staff, and school leaders participated in at least one of the courses. Pre- and post-course surveys results indicated overwhelmingly positive feedback and educators' own growth and understanding of themselves and others. Ms. O'Neill facilitated the creation of this learning series, but I would be remiss not to express my appreciation for Japira Keys, Jasmine Brown, Tiffany Stevens, and Brian Smith, district instructional coaches and community learning center staff who willingly worked with our department during the mandatory COVID school shutdown to support the development of these trainings for this learning center, series. The Equity Diversity and Opportunity Facilitator Learning Series was developed based on its expressed interest from social workers, school counselors, and school psychologists interested in facilitating opportunities to engage with colleagues around issues of equity, as, as well as support staff as they engage in daring dialogue on belonging in a culture of dignity, race, and the complexity of culture. This learning series is an opportunity to supplement our school-based mental health professional skills and ensure the information they share is in alignment with the language and expectations used by our department. We now have a total of 26 staff in our first cohort. This school year, this school leadership has had an intentional focus on building a cultural trust through restorative practices. Carigene, Carigene O'Neill has been leading this work with school leaders across the division through the lens of culturally responsive restorative practices. She's been working with principals and assistant principals to increase their capacity to understand and implement proactive and preventative practices that build community and trust within schools. Using language that affirms student identity develops empathy and allows for the opportunity to repair the harm that may have occurred. Cohorts of elementary and secondary staff are now participating in training that will give them the skills needed to apply culturally responsive restorative practices in their classroom. This work is essential to building the culture of belonging needed to advance culturally responsive education practices and address inequities. In response to the issues of social unrest in the spring of 2020, the department, our department developed a Culture of Dignity Response Professional Development Plan that addressed the well-being and needs of staffs in that moment. The plan included affinity group meetings as well as action-oriented book studies and discussions that all took place over the summer. The choice of books for, the choice of books and the focus of the affinity groups was premised on concerns noted during the healing circles our department facilitated following the murder of George Floyd. As a result of the plan, over 300 educators, staff, and school leaders participated in at least one of the opportunities, with an exit survey results indicating overwhelmingly positive feedback about educators' feelings of personal and professional growth. The Culture of Dignity Responsive Professional Development Plan included the formation of the voluntary affinity groups. My office, along with Human Resource, is tasked with improving the racial disproportionality of students to teachers. This is an issue not just in Henrico, but throughout the nation, and studies have suggested that schools need to not only focus on the identification of Black, Indigenous, and people of color for teachers, but also to implement program, programming that supports retention. One way studies have shown to assist with attracting more diverse candidates and reducing turnover and increasing employee morale is the induction of affinity groups. Affinity groups can be used for networking, mentorship, and other opportunities for professional and personal development. Historically, affinity groups were centered on race or gender, but these are groups are increasingly being created for those sharing other characteristics such as age, areas of interest, veteran status, or sexual identity. The meetings were held throughout the summer with three distinct groups of staff members, allies, co-conspirators, teachers of color, and Black educators. Each of the groups had a specific purpose as outlined, and, and that three to four times throughout the summer. A virtual summit was held with participants from all their groups that provided an opportunity for networking, discussion, and problem solving related to our future professional development needs. We internally identified the summer of 2020 as Cycle One, and now we are in Cycle Two in the school term. I would like to focus on one particular group. Our, in Cycle One, the Black Educator Affinity Group, now known as the Black Educator Collective, provided a space for staff to initially process past and current feelings specific to being a Black staff member with HCPS, identify strategies for communicating concerns to peers and leaders, and identify viable solutions for the concerns of Black staff and students. When doing the affinity work this summer, we established an African-American Black Staff Task Force to collect information on the concerns and collectively work to craft recommendations for establishing or re-establishing a social contract to improve the outcomes of African-American Black students and engage African-American parents as well as create an environment where all African-American staff felt like they can thrive. Information was collected from over 61 Black staff. Using their input, the Black Staff Affinity Group Report was crafted that, with noted concerns and provided recommendations. This will be formally submitted to the school board for review. I want to personally thank Stacy Davis, the Associate Principal of Glen Allen High School, for leading this charge over the summer and assisting with crafting the report. In response to finding within the report, we transitioned in the Cycle Two from an affinity group into a Black Educator Collective, a group of individuals bringing together their gifts, perspectives, and insights to, to benefit the good of the whole. We chose to make this change because the research found a longing for Black educators to be recognized not only for their ability to engage effectively with students, but their instructional expertise to be highlighted. The Black Educator Collective has been tasked with celebrating and expanding on their gifts within the group to maximize an extension of camaraderie and a progress for our current Black educators. Other historically marginalized groups have expressed interest in creating allyship groups, and you will hear more about them in the future. These groups will continue to serve as a support and a source of knowledge to inform future efforts in our department. During the 2019-20 school year, the office, the office, yeah, developed the CREAM framework as we noted here. Next, they're expected, the CREAM model requires teachers to reflect on their own cultural competence and become aware of the importance of honoring their students' fund of knowledge. In support of this effort, we, Tiffany Lewis has, is now being brought on as an educator coordinator for the Culture Responsive Learning. Tiffany is also a product of Henrico County Public Schools, specifically a graduate of the Center for Communications at Verona High School. She has a Bachelor's of Science in Communications from Old Dominion, Old Dominion University, a Master's of Art Degree in Organization of Communications from Marissa's College, and a Master's of Education from Curriculum and Instruction with a concentrating and reading specialist from the University of Virginia. Prior to her current role, Tiffany worked as an English teacher at her alma mater, Verona High School. Ms. Lewis reached extended beyond the classroom as a conference presenter on the state and national levels and as a member of the Virginia Department of Education Steering Committee, English Steering Committee. Ms. Lewis is. Ms. Lewis's roles and responsibilities include supporting instructional specialists as they seek to embody the CREAM framework within their curriculum design, provide PD and coaching to instructional coaches, and school leaders so they can assist teachers with incorporating this lens into their daily instruction. In addition, she is available for consult and in-person support for teachers. In accompaniment to the Culture Responsive Education Model, we are in the final stages of creating a CREAM rubric. The CREAM rubric will inform the framework in a way that distributes meaning and designation to the spokes by varying degrees of implementation. The CREAM rubric will serve as a guide for categorizing and educators' practice of culture responsive teaching in the following designations: emerging, developing, advancing, and mastering. The current coordinator and specialist will use the CREAM rubric to steer future professional developments and trainings. In an effort to further expand our work, we have made an effective, we have made an active effort to collaborate with community stakeholders to bring the CREAM to life. In partnership with the Valentine Museum of Richmond, EDO has currently developed curated learning experiences that integrate the CREAM model with existing programs at the museum. The Valentine has been our entry point, but we look forward to reaching out to other community stakeholders in this work. Our ultimate goal is to promote the use of experiences for children, particularly for our students in traditionally marginalized and underserved communities. As of this date, we have three schools teach, schools teaching a semester-long African-American history course, and our office is working on expanding this programming. We are proud to announce that we are part of the Virginia Department of Education pilot for the full-year African-American history course at Henrico High School. This course was designed in collaboration with the African-American History Commission, of which I served on as the African-American History Course Design Committee. We are now designing a summer training for staff who plan to teach African-American studies at their school in the fall. The course will provide an overview of the state-designed African-American history curriculum and introduce field trip opportunities in alignment with the VDOE curriculum. To ensure access for all interested students, we plan to offer a cross-district virtual full-year course. Our office will provide supplemental resources to include book studies and funds to offset the expense of in-person field trip students enrolled, for students enrolled in their virtual course. Inclusive education recognizes the need to empower students, staff, and the greater community engaged in their learning, but we believe it is essential to promote, inform, guide, and grow. We do this by promoting Heritage and History Months, guiding people to learn about different perspectives, informing, informed by sharing information in our newsletter, and support by offering programming that is insightful and informative. We hope all teachers are exposed to students to cultural knowledge about themselves and others throughout their courses, but we recognize that there are federally recognized months designated to celebrate groups that have not historically been highlighted. For September, November, February, May, the office, our office promotes the celebration of the following cultural heritage groups: Hispanic, Native American, Black, and Asian Pacific Islander. Our hope is that every school again recognizes these months, but we'd like to kind of outline some of the things that we've done. In October, we focused on the celebration of Hispanic and Latinx history and culture, and we included a Latinx teacher panel, and we invited the Virginia Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to provide information on services for the Latin American Hispanic community. In November, we celebrated Native American history and culture with a Native American teacher panel. Teresa Costola-Hobbs, an HCPS elementary teacher of Indigenous descent, met virtually with teachers from across the county to discuss some of the misunderstandings around Native American history and shared lesson plans that teachers could use in their classroom to clarify the misunderstandings so that their teaching is not filled with disinformation nor causes harm to students of Indigenous descent. In February, we are celebrating Black History Month, and we, which is now, and we plan to feature a homegrown Black Henrico panel that provides HCPS students, staff, and families an opportunity to meet notable Black professionals who are also HCPS alumni. We are highlighting artistic expressions from the HCPS students that provide post-millennial Generation Z, Alpha Generation responses to African-Americans' current social, intellectual, and cultural identities. The theme is Seen and Heard: Post-Millennial Expressions of Black Resilience. These submissions will be put together into a PowerPoint and that we will have it displayed on our website. We will celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islanders in our Cultural Heritage Series in upcoming, and we will also have it aligned with our newsletter. Diversity Inclusivity Learning Series goal is to provide, goal is to guide people to learn about different perspectives. Topics for learning lunches are announced each month and are available to staff and community members who wish to participate. We identify different community members to discuss issues regarding a subject around diversity and inclusivity. Topics thus far have included guest speakers from the county talking about their efforts to address poverty within our community, a virtual talk with the leaders of Side-by-Side and LGBTQ+ organization based in Richmond. Our newsletter, Equity Diversity and Opportunity Newsletter, is designed to inform. The theme and focus of our newsletter corresponds as much as possible to our heritage recognition and awareness efforts, but it also includes a focus on poverty, LGBTQ, and religion. In addition, each newsletter provides information on free food and health programs. Articles are contributed by the HCPS students, staff, community members, and areas support individuals. All newsletters can be found on the EDO website, and we send the newsletter out to people who have expressed interest in our work and those identified on our most vulnerable family list. When school initially closed, our office worked with family engagement, Henrico Education Fund, and Henrico County staff to prop up a food distribution program that distributed emergency food bags to families and community-based nonprofits that, working in high-need communities. To further support families, we implemented something we called Equity Monday Virtual Meetups to provide knowledge as a source of empowerment. Some of the topics we addressed at these meetups included grade recovery, COVID mythbusters, internet safety, cooking on a budget. We plan to reinstate these meetups this summer and continue to focus on empowerment. We hope to expand our program to include authentic talks about barriers to belonging and inclusion with dignity. Equity Ambassadors is a different, is a district-wide program for high school students to make sure their voices regarding equity and diversity are heard in a safe space. We support them by engaging and educating them on issues of equity and inclusivity, which aligns with the equity and opportunity cornerstone. Every year, we seek to design our programming with explicit programmatic goals in support of this mission. In 2019-2020, we focused on laying the groundwork for daring dialogue, and in 2021, we focused on leadership in the space of equity, equity with the goal of providing skills that empower students to build bridges to peace, inclusion, and respect for all so they have a sense of belonging within the schools and the greater community. This year, we had to make changes due to our switch from in-person to virtual programming. In the past, we met with students four times a school year to provide development and guidance with our, within our areas of focus, but to keep a school charter for Equity Ambassadors, they are expected to engage in at least two programming activities on whatever group who, who support, whatever group they're choosing to support. Within this world, we have changed from four meetings to all virtual. Some of the examples of past efforts our students have done is they have coordinated a cultural lunch meeting group to include food from different countries and engage in get-to-know-you games. They have facilitated daring dialogue library talks that included empathy-building activities with their fellow students and teachers. They engaged in a filming of daring dialogue conversations in a car for a website they created. They sponsored a clothing closet for professional dress attire to assist fellow students with clothes needed for job interviews and other dress-up events. Due to social unrest around issues of race, we provided Equity Ambassadors voluntarily the opportunity to participate in a cross-district book club using stamped "Racism, Anti-Racism in You" by Jason Reynolds and Eva and Kimdi. Students were broken into cross-district groups named after diverse activists and leaders who fought for marginalized groups. Students from different schools and with various backgrounds read the book, guided by a study guide that included supporting articles and videos, and students engaged in monthly discussions. During the second semester, participants were at, are going to be asked to create a podcast around the book study that combines ideas from the reading and their own lived experiences of the person or person the participant's choosing. These podcasts will be used as a tool for teaching the importance of equity in schools and communities and showcased during the summer. Language Navigators produce videos in native languages that explain vital HCPS information for families in our immigrant communities. A brief language video is easier oftentimes for families to access, and when it comes for students who are speaking their home language, we believe, we believe it is also very comforting. Jose Flores, a Spanish teacher and administrative aide at Tucker High School, is the originator of the Language Navigator Program. We have now taken it under the wings in our office. He and the Equity Ambassador designed the program as their initial equity initiative. As this year, as we transitioned the program district-wide, Mr. Flores is working part-time with Ms. Saunders, a retired principal, and a part-time coordinator for our student voice efforts to ensure fidelity of process and product. We now have 82 navigators who speak 16 different languages. These are groups, there are 26 groups of three to five students who speak the same language, who work together to put together our video projects. Their completed and approved videos are posted to our Equity and Diversity YouTube channel for easy access by non-English-speaking families. So far, navigators have produced videos for Creating a Parent Portal, Virtual Learning Tips, and the Welcome Center. They are currently working on videos for RICOR, Timeline for In-Person Phasing, and Health Updates. Since my arrival, I have heard from a broad range of students that they want, that they want, they want my support with establishing a course that broadens the understanding of various ethnicities and cultures. During the summer, that call became louder and undeniable. In response, our team is working to craft an ethnic studies course and develop a cultural awareness and equity learning centers for students. Our office is collaborating with Taylor Snow, the History and Social Science Specialist, and a small group of dedicated students. The Ethnic Studies Course will blend English Ten and World Geography using essential questions focused on current ethnic issues. This course will allow students to acquire background knowledge on diverse ethnic and cultural groups in their, in their community and the world around, and will, and will assist them with meeting some graduation requirements because we are seeking to use, to align world geography and English Ten. During a latest school board meeting, the students who have assisted with this effort will formally propose the Ethnic Studies Course to the school board for future HCPS course implementation. As stated earlier, it was increasingly clear that students desired for themselves and their peers an opportunity to develop broader cultural and ethnic awareness. We understand that the Ethnic Studies Course, if approved, would not address the concern in the immunity, and it may not be accessible to everyone for a multitude of reasons. Subsequently, I tasked a team of students to work with Jasmine Brown, a director, a district instructional coach, and a part-time EDO team member to develop cultural awareness student, video clips for students. And the VDOE, when they found out about the project, has asked us to present those to them because they're very interested. So we're thinking that they'll run a little bit like TikTok videos, so, but they'll give information to students to help guide their awareness. Thank you for taking the time to hear about the work being done by the Office of Equity Diversity and Opportunity. If you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer them at this time. For the larger audience, I have provided the contact information and look forward to speaking with anyone who expresses interest in our work.
You can breathe now. Take a deep breath. Now, we started last time with Ms. Cancelo, we'll start with Ms. Atkins, and we'll, any comments, questions, and shot, you know, efforts to express appreciation, so?
So, Dr. Manns, I just want to say it takes guts to stay true to yourself and accomplish HCPS goals. And in your position, I want to make sure that I said that to you publicly. I know that your work in addressing culturally responsive practices and equity, also that fine line of balancing the school experience and the at-home experience is a really delicate balance, and your work is hard. But I think Vince Lombardi, he said it best, that the only place where success comes before work is in the dictionary. And so I want to continue to encourage you as you fight this war, because that's exactly what it is. And so I just want you to know I value your presence here today. It's necessary to be intentional and make safe spaces for activists and for our future activists, and listen to, you know, all the equity issues that are teenagers, but specifically teens is where I hear it from, and I would imagine you as well. I want to share with you some of the topics of late, if you want to grab your pen, you're probably already aware, but while I have you here, so.
Well, take notes, Dr. Manns. Okay. I'll get off the pen at the podium. Those will be taken.
All right, thank you. Okay. So, mental health, hands down, that's number one. I'm hearing a lot from the LGBTQ community. Okay, you nod in your head, so you're getting it too.
I got it.
Okay. And then policies surrounding our code of conduct. I don't know if you've gotten that one, that one's really new.
Yeah, that one's new, that one's a new one.
Yeah. So I just wanted to share that with you while I have your attention, and your presentation addresses what HCPS is doing to ensure staff and students have agency, you know, around equity. But do you mind sharing with me what, what the vision is? What's the end game? What does Henrico County look like once we've been successful in those culturally responsive practices? And then after that, if you could share with me, what do you need from me or this board to continue to be successful?
So I think it's interesting, I navigate our work in two spaces, right? So I navigate our work with the space of equity, and I navigate it with the space of culture responsive practices. And the reason that I navigate in two spaces, because oftentimes you hear people navigate them together, is I think about my son. So my, my husband and I are very comfortable, like our lives are very comfortable, right? So if my son has certain needs, even if the school doesn't provide them, I can write the check for it. There's nothing that the school can't provide that I can't write the check for to ensure he gets it. But what I can't do is ensure that he sees himself in the instruction practices that happen. So it's, so when I, so as I answer your question, I want to make sure that I'm really clear and intentional about those two things, because I think that sometimes they, when you do not separate them out, then something gets lost in the mix. So when you say to me what I want for, what culture response is, I want to never hear again from a child that they never saw themselves in the instruction, that nobody ever asked them about their culture, nobody ever honored their language. So that when we send out a survey about belonging, that every child says that I have a space in my school, that there's never a time that I don't walk in that someone doesn't see me. So that's what I would say around that for the CRT. When you talk about an equity, if that is part of that commentary that you ask, is that this idea that east and west, not that it doesn't exist, but there is not, there is not a concern that they are not getting the same things on both sides, that there is never a question that the opportunity that happens in one school here isn't going to happen in another school there, that this idea of advanced achievement is something that every single child believes that is there, that they, that is attainable for them, and more so that they want it, right? And that every single teacher and school counselor believes that they can do it. So if you ask me what I want, is that's where I would like us to be, in both of those spaces, both this equity space and this sense of belonging, culture response space. I'm sorry?
No, continue.
No, I was saying, so then if you said, you asked me what, the secondary question is what could you all do? I think ask the hard questions. I need for you all to ask the hard questions of us as we do our work, because I don't do this without them, right? And so I do need for you all to ask us the tough questions, so then we can go back and collaborate our answers to make sure that we are responding to what you're asking us. I don't go into this work thinking it's going to be easy. I didn't, I've came, you know, there's no job that I've ever taken because it was easy. I took this job because I understood that it was going to be hard work, and I thrive in hard work, right? And I also thrive when I see students succeed, and I am seeing students having conversations and engaging in a way they never have. And I'm seeing teachers do it. What I'd like to see more is community members do it, because what happens is when you have a teacher and a student who is doing the work and community members aren't, you begin to have an impasse that's going to make your jobs very difficult. So that's what I would say I would like.
I'm so pleased to hear that. So I'm going to ask a tough question, and you just take it in and absorb it, and then get back to me later if you need to. I think that one of, one of the toughest things in navigating Henrico County Public Schools, and then the navigation at home, is between race and ethnicity. They are not the same.
They are not the same.
For some, I'll give you the example. For some will see me and say, her race is Black, and so is her ethnicity, because you're basing it only on my color. So I'd like to, to challenge you, I think that's a great discussion, it's a very hard one, in defining the difference between race and ethnicities, all the way down to your forms, like a census where you may not only have the option, but to check Black, your color, but not necessarily your heritage. color, but not necessarily your heritage, heritage or history. And so, I bring that to you today because it's very real conversations happening with our teenagers and in their classrooms, particularly when we think about African-American history. I was not born in Africa and can't, you know, came over to America, you know? My history was stolen through slavery, but the only option that I have is Black, because I do not know my heritage or my roots as much as what I would like. And so, I really would like to see more depth, a deepening in conversation, and that's something I will absolutely support you on and be engaged in, because that is rising to the top, particularly in my community. And I think I've had a few students from Tucker as well reach out to me as recently as earlier today about, about that topic, and being very real when we talk about race beyond what's on a, a job application, so.
Yes.
I thank you for your presence. This has been a long time coming. I'm so appreciative. You have no idea how appreciative I am to hear about all of the work that you're doing. And also, if possible, if I could see a timeline of your actions, future actions, because I'd like to support you in them, but it's very tough, because there seems to be so many, and I'd like to be able to prioritize and, and support you in that way. So again, I value who you are, I value what you do, and I'm so looking forward to learning so much more. So, thank you so much.
And I will be submitting executive summaries to cover most of this information, just, it's a lot of information to take in, and I, I wanted to submit them afterwards, so I could answer any questions that may came up. So you'll get some executive summaries overviewing most of the highlights of the information I shared.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So again, I echo a lot of the sentiments that Ms. Atkins has stated. Couple of questions. The social media account, Black at HCPS, created last year, highlighted stories from Black students and others of Brown students of races, as they spoke out against systematic and institutionalized racism. So can you real, just quick, tell us a little bit more about your department's work with those students and some of the recommendations that have been made to make changes within our school system?
So interestingly, I tried to incorporate some of the commentary that may, we met, I met with a number, I probably met with about five groups over the summer, different groups, talking with them around it. Just to also to let you know, I pull HCPS's information, and we actually did a data analysis of it, so we could have a better understanding of what the issues were that were being presented there, because their words were valuable. And we looked at those things, and so, I think I spoke about, those were some of the initiatives that came in those conversations. One of the things that was the most important is that they really wanted the focus to be around our instruction, right? That was huge for them, and that was, interestingly enough, what we were working towards for this year. And so, Tiffany Lewis, who I mentioned in our, in my presentation, that is her sole job, is to ensure that we begin to have our students see themselves in the instruction, and also that we acknowledge that they come with funds of knowledge, which is foundational knowledge and, um, within our instruction. Because sometimes I think that when we're teachers, that we're the givers of knowledge, instead of that we are, should be receiving information and highlighting what they come with as well, right? And so, this idea of CRT is not just that we just begin to see a, we begin to use more diverse texts, but we recognize that our students come, are valuable informers to us in this process. We also engage them in critical dialogue about difficult conversations. These students are having these conversations on social media and personally. We need to allow them space to have those conversations in class, as long as we can give them the appropriate parameters in which to happen. And so, those are things that our students ask for. They asked for the Ethnic Studies Course. We are now in the process of not only developing one, but getting their input and the development. They wanted more social, wanted more awareness, we did that as well. That's where we're getting the videos from. So a lot of the things that were the initiatives that you saw are us doing that. They wanted to be involved in conversations, that's why we're reading the books stamped. So a lot of the decisions that we made really came from the student voice opportunities as they talked to me, and we didn't respond it to them. Now, when you talk about some of the structural things, okay, when you talk about some of the structural things, our equity teams are working on that, and we are going to give you a report at the end of the year to talk about that, because each school is different. We are really unique in our county, that every single school's different, and the needs look different. So I don't want to stand up here and say, here's one thing that we're doing to work on that from the school-based level. Now, I will say from the district level, one of the things that I'm hoping, as we develop, move towards the strategic, our strategic plan, that you're going to see more, really clear plans on how we're going to begin to break down some of the systems that have inadvertently been put in place as barriers for our students. So I think that's forthcoming, and again, this is why I need you all to ask us the hard questions.
Now, I appreciate your acknowledgement of, and, and our intentional dissemination of the data, and to drill down to exactly, you know, what the concerns are, how we can mitigate, so that's very important. So thanks for asking that quick question. I know we have to hurry, I was just informed ICE is falling, so.
I was trying.
Yeah, no doubt. Can you speak more quickly about the culture responsive education model? And let me, let me frame it. When I think about many of our, the areas of our school division where improvement and equity, diversity, and opportunity is, is needed, such as discipline among cer- certain races and ethnicities, graduation, graduation rates, gifted enrollment, advanced course enrollment, et cetera, could you just speak briefly to the, to the role that your department has played in helping to shape the changes needed?
So I think that really falls within our consultation conversation. Uh, you know, I meet with the, I, I would say, I am beginning to be invited into more of the conversations around how do we begin to break down those barriers? And I think as, you know, our staffing has changed, and there, and it's been a huge focus on COVID, right? And so I think that as things are beginning to calm down, the conversations are now coming back up again, uh, to say, what do we need to do? And so my job in those spaces is to bring in best practices and innovations about what other places are doing. And so I think that being invited to the space and then them hearing, right, these ideas that I'm coming with, because I try not to show up unless I have research behind me, right? So I don't come up with just what I think is a good thing. It's like, here's the research, and here's what they're doing, and let me walk you through what it looks like. And so, and then, their, their job is to say, hey, this is what we can do with the resources that we have. Sometimes it's a resource issue, and sometimes it's a community issue, like, can the community receive that, with, that which I'm asking, right? And so I think that those conversations are beginning to be held. I'd like us to see us to have a really firm communication plan, and some, some really firm plans that you all can really look at, and so that we can really have a conversation about why this is in place, because what barrier does this break down?
Thank you so much, Dr. Manns. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Miss Chee?
Um, I'll just give you my comment, and then we'll defer the answer when the weather's not falling, but it may be able to be part of that June report you, or the summer report you were talking about. You know, it's, uh, it's easier to collect quanti- quantitative data on access and opportunity, but I'm really interested in how are we collecting information to ensure that we're really moving the needle within our schools, to ensure every student feels like a valued and essential part of our school community? So that more qualitative kind of nebulous, but to really ensure we're moving the needle there. And so, that can defer to a one-on-one conversation or the, or the later report. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Consella?
Am I supposed to rush this? Because I actually do want to spend some time. I mean, I know, I'm.
As, just be as, okay, as succinct as you can.
I will try to be succinct as possible.
And I would also offer, we, I know we have an upcoming board meeting, happy to add any items to the agenda and follow up with the board accordingly, but please take your time.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just go through it quickly in the essence of time. I really like how we're prioritizing our staffing, because our, our students, they can't be what they can't see. So I, I support our work there. I know we still have work to do, speaking of other work, and what Reverend Cooper said in terms of our gifted, our specialty center, all the programming, do we have a plan of how we're going to get there and increase, increase these programs to be more fair in their admission and, and in success? Do, do we have a plan there?
I would, I would say to you, it's in development.
Okay.
It's in development, and, and again, I think that really doesn't, you know, I am a, I am a contributor to the larger plan as it develops, and we are about to have a snowstorm, so I don't want to hold it up. But what I will say is, I think that the, that our teams are working on it, but again, it goes back to why I asked you all to ask us the hard questions, right? Having that conversation about requesting a plan, right, and having that plan ready and available for you, and then having them be able to explain to you why those choices were made for that plan, so.
And Dr. Farrell happens to be here, and I think he'll add a, a answer, because he's part of the team working on that.
Sure, good afternoon. So, we're in a process of looking at things like our specialty center, application and admissions process, also making sure that we're making more accessible opportunities for advanced courses, like AP courses, honors-level courses, and things of that nature. So it is part of the, the larger plan of the district to look at all programs holistically to ensure equity and access for all students.
I think the board is, are we scheduled to receive what, the plan possibly in April? Dr. Cashwell?
That's correct. We're, we'll be coming forward with, that's, some of this work is part of, sorry, I just hit the Plexiglas, part of the overall high school redesign piece is looking at equity and opportunity and access to programming, and so, yes, you'll hear some recommendations come from that group related to some changes.
Okay. And then I have two other things I'd like to share in the interest of time and the weather and us getting home safely. Is there an avenue for teachers? Because I didn't see it. I know that, I know you've had groups, focus groups. Is there an avenue for teachers to share ongoing feedback to EDO? And then, nextly, I would love for the board, I know Dr. Cashwell's done Teams Time, I know Andy Jinks did Teams Time, I would be very interested in board members doing Teams Time somehow with equity, with your Equity Ambassadors, so that they see us supporting the work, and we're getting to hear directly from them. I don't know if it's possible, but I wanted to put it forward, that I'm interested in it.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's very possible. In reference to this, we, anyone who sends us an email, which is why I posted the information, that we respond to every single, uh, every, every time someone contacts us, student, teacher, whomever, we, we try, we have a 24-hour response rate, so we try to make sure we turn it around fairly quickly. But is there a formal way? No, but I, I'm happy you brought that up. It's something that, let me take back to my team, so we can come up with something that will be, that will maybe be a little, little bit more formal in that way. The other thing about having you all come to Equity Ambassador meetings, particular, well, hopefully at some point, we'll come back in person and we can have you there physically, because it's pretty amazing. I mean, our students, I, I just have to say, I cannot brag on them enough, and you will be just astounded. Some of the dialogue that they have is, is, is enlightening to not only me, but to them as well. So it's, it's an amazing experience. I, let me think about how we would do it virtually, and what that might look like, because I think it may be viable, but I just want to make sure I do it in a way that's both beneficial to you all and beneficial to my students.
Okay, I just know this board has, has shown a lot of support for student voice and from all the different groups, and wanted to give Equity Ambassadors opportunity with board members as well. Just communication about the work, you're doing so much work. I can't wait for this executive summary, so that when folks ask me, what are you doing? I'll know exactly what to put down and, and respond. Thank you for the work you're doing, it's so important.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We are, have received, the next item on the agenda is the public, oh, I'm sorry, you have a, a sentence to say.
No, simply that that concludes any items I have, so.
But I just, the next item on the agenda is the public forum. We have received written comments from the public, we thank them for that, as always, and encourage people to reach out to us and give us their comments. So we have received that and appreciate it. Board members, is there any unfinished business?
Nope.
Any new business? I will announce that our next meeting is February 25th. We will be announcing soon the addition of our budget public hearing prior to that meeting, but the time will be determined. At this point, it is at 1 o'clock, we will let you know. Please, everyone, be careful driving home. We are adjourned.